Good evening. I'd like to call this March tenth, 2025, City Board of Education meeting. Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Scottman?
Here.
Ms. Laballette?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Mr. Vought?
Here.
Please join us in the session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we do have to have an executive session, as we have no people attending our meeting, one of us needs to leave for a very important family function. So we're going to go into executive session beginning of this meeting or to commit out at half. So I'm moving on to executive session for the purpose of employment of- Personal. Personal. Second. Okay, can you call the role? Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, we will come back and have the regular meeting. Okay, thank you. We are out of executive session. Ready to move on with our regular agenda. This is the first opportunity for public participation. Try and put your on the agenda. But seeing no one here, I'm going to assume there isn't. There isn't anything. And so that puts us with you. Adam?
All right. So 3.1, I'm going to do a state and local funding overview. So this is the last fiscal year of the state budget. So we're coming up to budget season and the first governor's proposal came out a couple of weeks ago. So we're dissecting what that kind of looks like. So I wanted to take that, this opportunity to kind of explain, give a funding overview from the state side and then with Lucas County, the property tax reappraisal that kicked in this January for last year's value, I wanted to kind of give an overview of that. And then just tie it all together on how federal, local taxes and local values impact state funding as well. So just a quick overview and we'll talk about all those things, the funding history, kind of look at our actual collections and estimates for the next two years based on the state revenue and local revenue and really see how that all ties together. So I wanted to take this opportunity to just kind of paint the picture of kind of where we are in the funding model. So back to '06, '09, there was this building blocks model and then every two year, then it changed and then changed and then changed. But what, where we're at now is this Fair Funding Plan model. And it's, it's in the fourth year of implementation and it's stuck. So it started in FY '18. So that is where we are today. It's an actual model that kind of ties to enrollment and ties to local funding and local values. And it's a really a nice model that's not throwing, you know, a dart at a dark board, right? So I think, you know, back to all those other models, it just changed. Every two year, new governor comes in, right? New budget, new kind of plan. But here we are with the Fair Funding Model and it really is, it was a bipartisan group. We've talked about that over the years. Like it's a real model that has, that's still hard to follow and hard to understand. But it really does a nice job for public ed. So that's kind of where we are.
Can I ask a question about that? Is the Fair Funding, I know that for years we heard about how Ohio's school funding had been deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court of Ohio. And that was because it was based on property values. So students that were in low income areas were getting, had less resources for education. And so that, I guess I just want to make sure I understand. Is that Fair Funding Plan model meant to satisfy the reasons that it was previously held unconstitutional?
Yeah, well, I think it's still in terms of dollar and what percentage the state pays. I think it's still considered, they're still funding at lower than that, the wrong decision. But it aims to be a more fair model. So the base cost, so this is really the Fair Funding Plan in a nutshell. And then we're going to watch a quick three-minute video that does a really nice job of explaining it. It really aims to take in your base cost, which is the buckets for, you know, what it costs to educate a typical student. So in the base cost, it has averages of teacher salaries, superintendent salaries, treasurer's salaries, operational costs, utility data, like even how much the average school spends on insurance plans, like that's all included in that base cost. And then they give additional funds outside of that base cost for your specialized services, like your students with special needs, your English learners and, you know, poverty and so on. And then the locals contribution to figure out the local and state share. That's how property taxes and median income value gets factored into the formula. And I'll get into it in the next couple of slides after we watch the short video. That kind of allows you to understand how the changes in value impacts how much actually we receive. So bear with me for three minutes. I think this does a really good job. Columbus City Schools flipped us out and I think it really does a really nice job of explaining the Fair Funding Plan.
Let's face it, Ohio's current education funding system has its challenges. Every two years legislators debate, refine, tweak, reconcile amendments and changes to how school districts receive funding. It's tough to understand. The formula has changed every couple of years. And often what's best for our students has been set aside to reach a compromise just to pass the funding bill. It's time for something new, something easy to understand that's transparent and equitable. The Ohio Fair School Funding Plan is a bipartisan agreement that is fair to our students and taxpayers. It was crafted with input and guidance from educators, treasurers, and superintendents across the state, not just politicians. So how does it work? Let's jump in. It's done in three easy steps. Step one, base cost, what every student needs for a basic education. Step two, specialized services, above and beyond what the typical student needs. We layer on additional dollars to students who need it most. Step three, state-local share, recognizes the appropriate way in which a community and the state participates in the sharing of these expenses. At the foundation of this plan is something called the base cost. The dollar amount required to educate every student. This is defined as a student with no disabilities, no special gifts, who do not live in poverty and are not learning English. Think of the base cost as a bucket designed to meet an average student's needs from pre-K through grade 12. It pays for core classroom teachers, electives such as art, music, physical education, and more, substitute teachers to cover for classroom teachers, school supplies and technology, clubs, activities, and athletics, transportation, principals, counselors, librarians, cafeteria, and custodial workers, and building level support staff. And because a school is part of a local school district, it also pays for district administrators and support staff, fiscal officers, data specialists, operation and maintenance workers, and more. While this bucket provides everything the typical student needs, some students require a little more to be successful. Think of it as a bucket that is handed out as students pass by according to need. This bucket pays for specialized services such as gifted education, special education, English learners, career technical education, and poverty assistance. So once we determine the base cost and any extras, how is this funded? It's a local and state partnership. First, we look at what a local school district can raise based on the value of the property in the district for each student. But property valuation and property taxes only tell part of the story. So we next look at the income of the district's residents. Both look at paying income taxes for each student as well as how much the person in the middle of the pack makes. These are all combined to determine a local capacity factor, a fairer way to recognize a community's ability to participate in the state-local partnership. Then Ohio pays for its share and funds the remaining balance. It gives more aid to disadvantaged districts and less aid to those who can fill the bucket higher by themselves. To summarize, every student gets the same bucket, the base cost. Those who would benefit from specialized support get an additional bucket. After this is all totaled up, we then look to determine how much the local district should pay with the balance being made up by the state.
Easy to understand?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there's a lot more to it, but I thought that did a nice job. So kind of here's where we are with the Fair School Funding Plan and the implementation. So like I said, you know, this is our, this fiscal year '25 is the fourth year of it. So it started a phase in of 17% and then obviously increased from there. So in the, you know, so the next budget bill is kind of where, where we are with, okay, is that going to get fully implemented to 83 and then 100? And then the wild card is, is that last column in base cost. So all of that, those buckets for base costs have an average cost, obviously. And right now, those are funded at 22 levels, okay? So we're obviously in fiscal year '25. So that's already three years behind. So, and we'll wrap it up at the end, but the, really the need for us is the base cost in the governor's proposal is still the 22 levels. So that'll be four years, you know, and then five years, you know, fast.
So does that mean that we're only getting 17% of the state's share according to the plan?
According to the, according to what the, right now it means 67%.
Oh, then we mean by-
So 67% of what the cost was in 2022?
It's not taking, you know, kind of like-
The changes in 2022?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, so if the base cost would get increased to say, let's just go 24, right? If we keep that same model of increasing it, you know, by two years, every two years, right? So that would be the base cost. So it'd be like the average teacher salary, we're getting funded based on the average teacher salary in '22. But it's going to be fiscal year '26. The average has gone up, right? Inflation, whatever, right?
But we are going to get the 67%, which was the plan.
Yeah. So here's the budget in a nutshell from, that was, now, there, there's reason, this is a budget process, right? This is just the initial, you know, Governor DeWine's initial, you know, simulations came out and this is how it shook out. So we're obviously in the top there for traditional schools. This is aggregated across all traditional, you know, public schools. We're looking at, you know, a decrease in funding there. Now I'll look at the asterisk. I mean, there is, I don't exactly know how that shakes out for us. But there is some additional preschool, special ed, and special ed transportation that are not included in those numbers. But as you can see, STEM schools, joint vocational, and the vouchers, they have increased in the budget, you know, and traditional funding for public schools have not. So this is the last bucket kind of of how the funding formula works. And I wanted to do a prior year history of where we were. The yellow is the state, is the local share and the blue is the state share. So in '21, before the funding formula kicked in, we were 6434. Now I will say, the next year, you know, it dropped, but they, there was an actual funding for them. We received more money, right? So they funded the plan, so we did benefit. But I just wanted to put that last, the last year before the funding plan in there to, to kind of, for my own knowledge, so I just threw it in there. But as you can see, relatively consistent, 24, we actually jumped up, you know, 5% there. And then we are in fiscal year '25. So right now it's 7822. But the way the governor's budget is projected out, it takes us from a state share of 22% to, as we sit here today, and in two short years, it goes down to 12%. That's, that's somewhat alarming in terms of that state and local share. And it really is, I mean, it just puts, you know, it just means we have to rely more on local tax dollars and local funding sources to provide the education for our kids. And this is, this is actual dollars and cents. So you'll, you'll see, you know, back in FY '22 with the, that was the first year of Fair School Funding, almost 17 million, 17 million we did in the last budget cycle because of the continued phase in of the formula and more dollars overall to public ed. We did see a big jump there. Little bit less this fiscal year because mainly we're down 100 kids. So it actually funds kids, which is, I think, a positive of the funding formula that it should be. And then the, in the gray there is the estimated, based on the Governor DeWine's budget. Over a two-year process, over a two-year cycle, it's, we're down $2.2 million. So that's, that's a big decrease and that gets you obviously to the state share of 11.7%, which I referenced there. So it's just something to keep in mind on how we work through our legislators. I'll talk at the end, maybe if we could put a little roadmap and some communication together to our public and try to get some advocacy there. But as we stand a day, there's a lot of changes that will be made between the House and the Senate. It's the standard budget cycle. So I don't want to oversell like, oh my gosh, Adam said we're going to lose 2.2 million dollars. It may happen and may not. I mean, generally-
So you're not ringing the fire alarm?
Not the fire alarm, but we're-
It does-
Yeah, oh, for sure.
Where's the discretion? I'm trying to, if that's the plan, then what, is it because we have adjusted for inflation? Is it-
Yeah, so-
What are we asking our legislators for?
Well, I'll discuss that right here. So why does our funding decrease? So if you look at the top two lines, our ADM, which is, you know, basically FTE kids that we educate, is pretty consistent, right? But those two top lines, if you notice in FY '24, those blue numbers, '22, '21, and then every year it gets updated, okay? So as our property valuation goes up, those numbers get reflected. As the median income in our community goes up, those numbers get inputted and increased every year in the formula, okay? Base cost in the red rectangle there, you'll notice it uses FY '22 inputs in an FY '24 base, to get a base cost. Those numbers don't change.
So they're using our current valuations and district average incomes, but using 2022 inputs as far as the cost of educating students?
Correct. That is the, that is the primary driving factor as to why our numbers are expected to go down by 2.2. That's how the funding formula works. So if you did in FY '26, if you said, okay, I want to use the FY '24 base cost, we're going to get more money in that bucket because the costs have gone up.
And that's what we need to advocate for?
That is what we need to advocate for.
Have they, have they said what they're doing with that yet or no? That's still up? They still use '22?
Yeah, that's what, that's the governor's budget.
And that's what we need from our community to advocate for.
Do we know if they used fiscal year '24 costs as the input, would we still be looking at a reduction in funding?
They have not put, they have not put that simulation out there. But I actually, I actually had a phone call today with Josh Williams. And he mentioned that if they updated the base cost in FY '25, we're talking billions of dollars that would cost. And that's the problem. Because updating the inputs that much is a tremendous dollar amount of state money.
2.2 for us?
Yeah.
Compounds to every other district.
Yes, right. So yeah, that's, that's the funding formula. We'll talk about it again, maybe game plan at the end. But let me talk about, you know, kind of how the tax is so, so, as we get into Property Tax 101, keep in mind how it ties into the funding formula with that first line, property valuation. So those are, those are increased every year, each age. So yeah, it's-
That looks like us.
Yeah, it still looks like me sometimes. So, so property taxes. So I figured, I thought this would be the easiest way to explain it in terms of, you know, one mill equals a dollar for every thousand-dollar taxable value. So you take a hundred thousand dollar appraised value home, take that times 30% and you get, we're actually taxed on, on that 35,000. And you divide that number by 1,000, which is one dollar for every thousand dollars of taxable value. And you take that to say one mill and that gets you a $35 tax. And that's the simplest of math for, as you can put. There's a lot more to go into it, but that's in simple terms. That's what we collect for every mill and for every dollar value of appraised value.
How many mills is our current operating unit?
Well, let's, give me 30 seconds.
I got you.
All right. So tax rate, so we, as we get into the numbers, I just want to explain first on the tax rate. So we have, so voted tax rates are all the levies we have since the 70s, right? And that, for those even outside of the school district, you have library taxes, you have SAGER, you have, you have all of that, right? That is, all encompasses your tax bill at, you know, in January that you got. Now every county gets 10 mills that's non-voted, that are guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States. Those are called inside mills, okay? In our taxing district, we get five of those 10, okay? So if those are non-voted, five mills we'll always get. And they do not decrease in value as values go up. So those always stay at five mills. So the effective tax rate, so you've heard me mention House Bill 920 a lot. So we have 80-some mills as voted rates, okay, voted tax rates. But because of House Bill 920, as values go up, the rates get rolled back. And that's called House Bill 920. Because our levies are designed to collect X amount of dollars. And that's, so that's why the reduction factors happen. So we collect relatively the same amount of money every year and those rates just get rolled back. So here's that in action. So in '23, collect, this is before the valuation change. So '23 collected in '24, we have a total gross or total voted rate in our school district of 85 mills, okay? And last year at this time, those were, those had an effective rate of 43 mills. So then '24 happens, Lucas County values go up based on where we are with the economy and home values and all that good stuff. The same 85 mills got rolled back even further to 33.9 mills. That is our effective rate as we stand here today. So that is a reduction of 9.25 mills. The lowest, so House Bill 920, part of House Bill 920 is the lowest millage you can have is 20 mills. You'll often see, you'll hear, it happens more in ruler, you know, rural schools, not so much city, but the-
20-mill floor.
The 20-mill floor. So we're 33.9, I mean, we're approaching the 20-mill floor. But, you know, I don't see a 9.25 effective rate happen again for several years. That property tax value spreadsheet, or that image right there is, again, I swear by it. That's easy. I'm a visual person. So top of that line, as values go up, school districts receive relatively the same amount of money because effective rates and voted rates get rolled back down.
So the amount we're getting is not changing. It's just-
The rates-
The mills are going down.
Yep. The only piece, the only levy that we continue to get the full collection on, and that is why our rates go up even a bit, is that inside mills. So those five mills stay at five mills and that's our increase that we see. So that's just in total valuation based on the different properties, whether it be ag, industrial, commercial, public utility, that's kind of the breakdown. So this is, this is key to, for my next slide. So our total valuation, every community member, every commercial property, every power line, gas line in our district, those values went up 28, 28%, okay? So now, what does that look like to real dollars and cents? So it's still shaken out. I still have a few settlements to get. But it looks like in FY '25, our estimated tax revenue is going to be 1.88% increase. So that's a big difference from 28%. People were like, okay, you got, our values went up 28%, you guys should bring in all this money. You got to factor in House Bill 920, you have to factor in that, those reduction factors. In pure dollars and cents, we got 1.8% increase, which is, you know, two, you know, 1.5 million. Easy as pie?
How much is the 1.8? What did you say?
75 million, some, yeah. Yeah, million and a half. So then next year, hold that thought real quick. Next year, you'll see that 2.7%. And that's really just because we have a full year of like in the higher rate that we got this year. So that's why, that's why in FY '27, it goes back down to less than 1%, which is similar to the increase we received from FY '22, '23.
Is the inside mill, the five, inside mill of five, part of the 20-mill floor or is it separate from? So that's the bottom, the 20 mills is the bottom and that includes the five?
Yeah. So when you're on the 20-mill floor, you actually collect all of the increase in value? Like, it's part of the formula, like, I, we won't ever get there. But if we were on the 20-mill floor, we would, we would see a significant increase, right? Because you, you get the revenue on the full value. So I like to sometimes just, this, Lucas County sends this every year. It's not really relevant to, you know, but it puts it in perspective, kind of, a cost of a hundred thousand dollar value of a home you'll see from '24 to '23. We're down on the list. So I just wanted to kind of see where we are from a tax burden standpoint on, you know, us compared to other these kinds of schools. Because I, I mean, I think oftentimes you hear it's, you know, we have, you know, the highest taxes and whatnot. I mean, we, we don't. And that puts it, this kind of solidifies that.
And I assume Perry's worth my view?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure. Because they-
They're not Lucas County's.
They're not Lucas County and they, they have different, obviously different funding structure. They have, they actually have the income tax as well, so. So then I just wanted to, this, this presentation was all about revenues, but I kind of wanted to tie it into, okay, you did a lot of revenue talk, but where do we stand financially on the expense side? And expenditures per pupil is the one area that the state gives us. It's, they use it to compare us. It's on the report card data. It shows kind of how much, exactly how it says, how much we spend to operate per kid that we have. And you can see there, we're pretty efficient at what we do. We're lower than Lucas County's. We're lower than Lucas County average, we're lower than the state average. The Department of Workforce and Development provides us a list every year of similar districts that, based on our tax, you know, values, and based on how many kids we educate, you know, they put us, they put like-minded schools together. So I tally those up, and we're under that average. So I think we're doing a really good job of managing our expenses and putting money towards kids. And I think this is one area where we can highlight that from a thousand-foot view on the expense side. So wrapping it up, you know, I think our key priorities is stabilizing that state share. And how we do that is by getting those base costs increased as much as possible. If we can get those base costs to increase, the funding formula will work in more of a real time because of what I talked about, of our values being changed every year as our median incomes changed every year. And I think we should continue to advocate to fully fund the Fair School Funding Plan. I think we've devoted a lot of time and energy and resources into a plan that is, that does kind of work for all schools, and we gotta play together in a sandbox a little bit. And I think to get rid of a funding plan and get rid of a formula, I think would be detrimental. I mean, we've done a lot of great work in the last four years. So I think we need to continue to advocate for the Fair Funding Plan. You know, I think I've reached out to, like I said, I had a phone call with Josh today. I have emails in to Mrs. Gavro, we're trying to connect. And that's the advocacy that I'm going to be doing with our local legislators. And I think that we should start a small campaign. I have an email partially done to just email the community. This presentation had a little summary of kind of where we are in the budget cycle. Here's what the governor's proposal is, the two point two million dollar cut. I just think our community, and I've had some conversations with the community about this, really believe our community should kind of be up to speed on where we are and what some of those decisions at the state level could have on us. And these are our two local legislators. And then, you know, from the House side and the Senate side, you have groups, you have the Finance Committee, the Education Committee. I think those would be two solid groups to kind of, to advocate for, whether it be telephone, email, you know. Obviously, Dr. Motley and I's organizations that we're part of, Olazbo, Bassa, Cape, that she's a part of-
Alliance.
Alliance, you know, OSBA, like, we're all advocating the same thing, same message. Everyone's got their own kind of unique story, and that's kind of what tonight was, was to show, you know, our story with the past and what it looks like in the future. So that's what I put together just to kind of give you a, you know, a thousand-foot view of our two revenue sources that make up a significant amount of money for us. Any thoughts on, you know, community outreach in terms of that? I mean, email work and try to gather a small group together to see if they wouldn't mind emailing and calling local legislators?
Small group, a large group, maybe to expand, you know, through social media. We can, we used to reach out and-
Yeah.
Yeah, to get people aware, you know, saw this presentation, they want to have.
So the community members and neighbors, specifically neighbors who may say, hey, my property taxes went up twenty-eight percent. Your school district is saying, oh, the answer, that's only about two percent.
Yep, one point eight eight percent.
That would justify some of those reasons for it.
And I think that's the assumption that many people make with their taxes go up, that we automatically receive more. So it's really interesting, that narrative, and giving them this type of information so they can better understand how it works, and it's complicated. You took a lot of challenging, complicated information and made it easy to understand. But nevertheless, how do we broaden that platform? So as Tim said, you could talk to your neighbor and say, yeah, I understand, they might ask, but listen, we didn't get all of that.
We had a very small, very small.
Very small.
Very small. And then with the budget, with what, you know, we're losing there from the state, did costs are going up?
When we talk about bully funding the Fair Plan, the Fair Funding Plan, does that mean, does that mean using the correct meter for that base cost bucket?
Yeah, it's kind of both. So in, and this is like in the leads that I mainly fumble at explaining it. So every two weeks, we get a foundation from the state. So in the documents, right now, it has, if the calculated state funding, what it would be if it was like fully phased in, would be about eight hundred thousand more than we're getting this year. So that's, because it's funded at point eight three percent, right? So if we got more of the, if we got a hundred percent of what they said we should get, that's a hundred percent of what we should get with base costs at FY '22 numbers. So if we go to fully fund, we would fully fund it at point eight three and then a hundred, and we need those base costs increased.
And is that the amount that Josh Williams is saying is that-
I think that's-
A billion dollars?
That was a little large.
But that was the plan, in terms of the Fair Funding Plan that was passed?
Yeah, it's been stuck on 2022. But it's just stuck on that 2022.
But even if that were increased, would we still be experiencing a reduction because of the increase in our property values that haven't been captured in terms of the income?
Potentially, I don't know exactly how that simulation would run. But it's not going to hurt us.
Does that effective rate calculation change if we were getting new levy?
Yeah, a new levy would be added on.
Because it would take away, okay.
It wouldn't impact the state funding side of things, because that's just part of the values. But if you would, if we would increase, you know, voted rates, that effective rate on that last number there, that thirty-three point nine, that is basically the effective rate of voted mills. So if we put a new levy on, that would go up.
So if our funding plan doesn't take into account what we collect in levy funding, it only takes into account what we could collect based upon our property values?
And median income. And assuming the higher median income, the more likely to be able to pass levies.
Is there a way to calculate what the state thinks we should be able to afford and determine what that millage, or what that millage would be? It's not like a math thing. Okay.
I know you kind of answered it indirectly, but state funding is still unconstitutional based on-
Yeah, I believe that is still the case. Because I think, I was, in one of the webinars I was in, I think that based on when that decision was, decision was made, it was like forty-two percent state share. And the average, that was what the average was in the first year of the School Funding Formula, but as it goes, the Fair Funding School. As the values go up and the base costs get the same, the state shares, like, going down at like an average of like thirty percent statewide. And ours, you know, like, ours is projected to be next year sixteen percent, you know, twelve percent.
Didn't you also say that we are one of the districts that's taken the highest?
Yeah, we're one of the, I think we're top ten. I think we're the ten-
In the state?
From dollars, like, true dollars and cents.
Did some rough math based on the numbers, you were, it looks like it'd be a nine point eight percent decrease the first year, because that, and then one point eight drawn here.
So I factored some of this in my, in the forecast that we approved. I thought it would take a little longer. I thought FY '27, we would be our bigger cut because of the three-year average of values. But, you know, based how it's shaken out, it's, as it stands now, next year will be a big cut.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was really great.
That's great.
Yeah, that was excellent.
Thank you.
And you said you've got names, we're going to send this out.
Yeah, I'm going to work with Amy and Dr. Motley and put an email out with a link. I'll have this presentation on our website, just so it can be, it can be just clicked on and not attach a document or anything that they can share with a narrative. And hopefully, people would reach out and ask further questions or, you know, ask for clarity on some things and put together a Google form. And if people want to, you know, join a group with me and have a meeting and advocate with us, I think it would be a nice thing for our community to get behind.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still with you, you know, the right-
Oh, yeah. Let me switch gears here. All right, so 3.2 is a Power for Schools Resolution Agreement. Every two years, we are a part of Power for Schools. It's a joint cooperative, kind of electricity cooperative with hundreds of schools throughout the state of Ohio through SBA, Olazbo, Ohio Schools Council. So rates jumped tremendously the previous two years, and this is thankfully a decrease of six percent. So just on the electric, one portion of our electric bill, but is projected to go down. If we approve this by the 31st of March, it'll go down by six percent starting July of '25.
No move approval on item 3.2?
One second.
Any comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
3.3 is an urgent necessity resolution to repair roof leak here at the admin building on third floor. It's raining pretty good up there the last couple of weeks. And then it will be about a ninety thousand dollar repair.
No move approval on item 3.3? One second. Any comments or questions?
So this is a repair, not a total replacement?
Well, it's a repair of that section.
So it's a replacement, that's a kind of-
Yeah, yeah.
So they're just, they're going to do a whole new section?
Yep.
Okay, Dan?
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
3.4 is an urgent necessity to repair a larger section at Arbor Hills. So we did a resolution in January for one section, and this is a much larger section at Arbor Hills.
No move approval, so second. Is this-
Who we got here?
Tammy and Julie. So it's going to be the complete roof of this plane between the two? How much, what percentage of the roof has been, will be replaced?
I don't know.
I was wondering about the same thing because it looks like-
We did a section before I got.
We had to go ahead and check out when that-
'22, I think.
Yeah.
It's a large building.
Yeah, and I think that, like, this is a part, if I remember correctly, that is still like from the gravel.
Yeah, original.
Yeah, it says gravel surface, yeah. Areas. So they've been doing, the other part was gravel, but then this part started leaking, like, libraries. Put over there, it's not great, so.
So I think it's the rest, if I remember-
It's the rest of the gravel?
Rest of the-
Gravel portion of the, the original gravel.
Is it going to be still gravel, or are we changing it to something?
Well, it's still gravel, so you gotta add new membrane and things like that, but it's still a block.
Yeah, and if you think about it, as old as the building is, we got our money out of it, it's time. It's the original, I do believe. Am I correct on that, Adam? I think it is the original, the gravel. I know they're having some of the things, it's the original. And I think this one is coming up next because I, my understanding is this is very similar, where they walk on it in certain spots, it causes weak spots because it's older.
Stop walking on it.
Everybody stays on their phone!
But no, I will find out what percentage now will be underway. But thank you for moving forward with this, it's been a challenge. Now that you have approved the resolution, I will be sent in communication to our staff and parents that we will be moving forward to address the issues. Thank you.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
3.5, my last one for the month. It's just a resolution to initiate the procedures for the retirement and reemployment of teaching positions. So we did an MOU with the SCA a couple of months ago, just to shore up our retiree hire procedures. And this, like I said, just kicks off. We'll do a public hearing like we always do, and then we'll hire them in May. The resolution posting, you know, with the names that they put in the paper, Twitter blade, it's going in on Thursday.
No move approval. Second. Any comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
This will save, if we do all six that apply, it will be about a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar savings.
That's great. Thank you. There with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. We are looking at item 4.1, which is a resolution for special education model policies and procedures. I do need to clarify for a moment to make sure we are asking the proper recommended action. Tim, I'll need to defer to you. I see that this is for, under public comment, a resolution for a first read, but I see above, it says "action."
Yeah, it's actually just a resolution, I don't think.
So it's not a first read, it is an action?
It is an action. So we have special education model policies, I can share that with you, it's about fifty-four pages. Just shows how we follow our education law, enabling schools, whether it be IEPs, change placement, just everything we follow, IEPs, et cetera, et cetera. There were some discrepancies between federal law recently and our current policies that we use. So basically, this resolution is just stating those discrepancies based on our guidance from the OLM. We're going to continue to follow that policy that we already have in place with a lot of policies. And some of the inconsistencies of the federal law caused with it, we're going to continue to follow the, like I said, a lot of policies that we've had in place. You know, how this resolution is.
So I would like to recommend that, under public comment, that this resolution is not for a first read. It is for an action as noted in the agenda. So we will need a vote for the resolution.
No move approval. Second. Any comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes. Thank you. Item 4.2, I recommend for a first read the policy for release time for religious instruction during the school day as posted.
No move approval.
This is fresh.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a discussion.
Moving on to item 4.3, I recommend approval of a University of Toledo Nursing Education Agreement as provided administrative content. This is an annual agreement that we have.
No move approval. One second. Any comments or questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item four point four, this is a memorandum of understanding between SCA and the Board of Education for staffing procedures.
I'll move approval. One second. Any comments or questions? Adam?
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, item four point five, I recommend for approval for remote teaching of the Savannah Virtual Academy.
I'll move approval. One second. Any comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you, my final item for this evening is a recommendation for item four point six, which is an overnight field trip for Holly Buck to accompany four students to campus to attend the state competition for Skills USA.
I'll move approval. I'm sorry, Dan. Any comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, there with you, Mr. Terrence.
Thank you, I will recommend items five point one through five point five on a consensus agenda basis. Five point one, our license to retirements, congratulations to Paul Moffitt, Gail Massey, and Teresa Anko. Three great ones there. Five point two is a licensed resignation. Five point three is a licensed substitute resignation. Five point four, licensed leave from absence, and five point five, licensed continuing.
I'll move approval on a consensus agenda basis, items five point one through five point five. One second. Any comments or questions? Thank you to those who, who are now here in the service. Thank you.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you, I will recommend items six point one and six point two on a consensus agenda basis. Six point one, classified hires, and six point two, classified personal changes.
I'll move approval on a consensus agenda basis, item six point one and six point two.
One second.
Any comments or questions? Yeah?
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, I will recommend item seven point one and seven point two on a consensus agenda basis. Seven point one, our athletic volunteers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and seven point two, our non-teaching pupil activity contract for this school year.
I'll move approval on a consensus agenda basis, item seven point one through seven point two. One second. Any comments or questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the second opportunity for approval for consideration, it runs now on the agenda. We don't really work very much, I should share, we are departmental. Thank you, one second. Dan?
Julie?
Yes.
Uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.